I'll call the order. The January 11th, 2021 meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little bit of housekeeping. First is, in accordance with an act to implement provisions necessary to the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Maine, in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency, as enacted to read Section G-11 MRSA Section 403-A, public proceedings through remote access during declaration of state emergency due to COVID-19, the meeting will be held live at One City Hall Plaza in the City Hall council chambers with only the allowable number of participants. According to the governor's executive orders, citizens may email questions and public comments on the public hearing agenda items, as well as other items this evening, to myself at dhamilton@ellsworthmain.gov throughout the duration of the meeting. The meeting is being broadcast live on the City of Ellsworth, Maine Facebook page and YouTube page. And also, we've opened up Zoom access. So on the city website, you can find that link. And if you want to make a public comment, you can do it in that form as well. And then just one other piece of information. We have on the agenda items 14, 15, and 16 related to the hiring of the city manager. I'll be reading the comments that have come in associated to that during item 14. Individuals who are commenting from Zoom may, can choose to either make comments related to that item during public comments or can hold it for that item. But just wanted to get some clarity around that as well. So with that, rules of order. We follow Robert's rules of order and any other rules that we determine during the organizational planning meeting. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council: 1116, 2020, regular council meeting, and 1221, 2020, regular council meeting.
Move to table.
Motion to second, all in favor. Unanimous. Item five, city manager's report.
Thank you. Tonight, we only have two quick announcements. The Ellsworth Ice Rink opened on Monday, January 4th at Nolton Park. And the weather doesn't look particularly great for ice making. It's still cold at night, but warming up during the days. But you can go to @ells... @ellsicerink to check out the conditions. Also, the city hall will be closed on Monday, January 18th for the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. However, it's important to note that trash pickup will remain on its regular schedule. And that is all I have, sir.
Any questions? All right. Item six, committee reports. Any councilors attend any committees? Did you want to do the crosswalk? Or do you want me to?
You can go ahead.
Okay. So the ad hoc crosswalk committee, this was the committee that was formed to look at, seeing if we could move forward any kind of consensus-based recommendations around the requests that had come before us in terms of rainbow crosswalks. We'll give a more detailed, we just met last week, or beginning of, last week, beginning of last week. And so next council meeting, we'll give a fuller update on the outcome of that when the minutes are published. And that will be available. So we'll update that at the next council meeting. I don't know if you had... Okay. All right. Item seven, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the agenda that is available for citizens to make comments on any matter. If there's an agenda item, you will have an opportunity to make comments during that agenda item. But if there's something that you'd like to express that's not on the agenda, you can certainly do it at this time. So I'll look here first in the room, and then we'll go to Zoom.
Good evening. This pertains a bit to agenda items 14 through 16, but a bit to other items as well. So I'll say it here.
Hey, can you just, just in, for folks on Zoom as well, if you could state your name and your address, where you live?
Yeah, my name's John Stein. I'm over on Franklin Street downtown here. Vice President of Heart of Ellsworth, owner of Fogtown Brewing Company as well, Downtown Brewery. Here tonight, acting as a representative of the group CARE, an ad hoc group formed a few weeks ago. Citizens acting for a responsible Ellsworth. I want to start by saying that I love Ellsworth, obviously. I'm not from here, but I live here now, and I'm right downtown. Chosen to buy a house and make my life here. I started a small business a few years ago. It's community-based through and through. In the past few years, I've come to understand a bit about the inner workings of city governance here. And I very much respect these councilors and appreciate the work that goes into making the city run like Ellsworth. I know that the members of this group CARE that I'm representing feel the same way. We have different political bentes, the group, different backgrounds, but we all want to see Ellsworth succeed and prosper. As Betsy Aronson wrote in a statement that Chair Hamilton will read in a little bit, just an excerpt from that, "We, the citizens," she wrote, "have confidence in you. We voted for each of you. We want you to succeed. We want the Ellsworth government to succeed. And we want to communicate more effectively with you so Ellsworth government can succeed." I also want to say on my behalf, I have great respect for Chief Moser as well. I've seen him give honest and thoughtful testimonies in this room over the years that have helped the council make some important decisions. One of those decisions was actually very helpful to my business as well. So personally, I have a lot of respect for the chief. I wanted to give that intro to highlight that CARE is a group of citizens whose goal is to help Ellsworth, to bolster our community and our city infrastructure. The group's goals mirror pretty closely the city's own comprehensive and strategic plans. And the group's tenants are simple: transparency of city government and striving to hold Ellsworth accountable to responsible progress. The group came together surrounding the search for a new manager several months ago. But we will continue to exist even after this issue is resolved, in whatever way that it is resolved. We'll continue to exist, not to be a nuisance or to cause any kind of drama in the city, but to help Ellsworth citizens and the council to communicate with one another. We have unique citizen perspectives that some of the councilors might not have considered. And we'll continue to act to bring wide-ranging concerns and opinions of fellow citizens to the council's attention. Concerns, for example, like the one we have today, like why was it so difficult to find more than one suitable city manager to apply for the position? If we can't get people to apply for jobs in the municipal sector, if we can't attract talent from afar, how will we grow as a city? And how can I, for example, as a business owner, expect to bring in more skilled employees to work and to live in town? We want a manager who will live in Ellsworth as well, who will want to live in Ellsworth. We want the city to hear that we're concerned that there is no solid plan at this point that we know of to fully separate the two full-time, ostensible positions of manager and police chief. We want to know if the city has also considered the optics of a police chief manager in a past year when we've seen Ellsworth's largest peaceful protests whose concerns were largely police-related. Maybe this dual position could work and has worked in smaller towns with smaller populations, towns that aren't, for example, a hub city like Ellsworth is. Surely, there are police chiefs that have years of experience and training in city management. But as Paul Markosian wrote in a statement that will also be read in a little bit, "Ellsworth, with its robust growth trends, both in population and economic activity, is too big for one person to take on both of these roles." What does it say that a number of citizens are sending emails and calling city council members and hearing back only from its chairman and are not necessarily satisfied with all of the answers received? What does it say that a number of citizens have contacted the city and have contacted our group CARE to tell us that they feel unheard by the council's lack of communication? What do we want? Well, tonight, we want to make sure that there will be a full-time city manager, that there'll be a full-time police chief, and that these won't be the same person. We want the city to uphold its existing hiring process, a process that demands qualifications that suit a city of our size, a process that started months ago by asking citizens what issues they thought should be considered and what attributes a manager should possess, resulting in answers like engaging with citizens and volunteers and organizations, developing a new comprehensive plan and strategic plan, focusing on staffing issues like retention of staff and hiring of qualified staff and tension in the community. That was a great start to a process that was unfortunately abandoned at the last moment. We began asking the city to look into these things a few weeks ago, and we're happy that the council has begun to consider our concerns. And we hope that these issues and concerns will be discussed in depth in tonight's agenda's items 14 through 16. But we're honestly not sure that they will be, and that is part of the problem. In the long run, in summation, we want to convince you that there is a need for better transparency. At this point, what matters is that the council agrees to commit to a higher level of transparency with its citizens. What does this mean exactly? Well, we'll have to figure it out together. CARE wants to help. Ellsworth citizens want to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? All right, we will go to the, to Zoom and open it up. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? I'm pausing just to make sure that there's no technology issues. So I'm assuming at this point, there isn't. And we will move forward then. Item number eight, presentation of awards. We have a few presentations this evening. First is Riley DeWitt. So Certificate of Service to Riley DeWitt in recognition of your five years of service as a career firefighter for the Ellsworth Fire Department and additionally for your three years as paid-on-call firefighter. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. Presented this 11th day of January 2021. Thank you. We'll make sure it gets to Riley. And then the next is Kenneth Warden.
You have to go to the middle because I see it. That's what I told. So the City of Ellsworth proudly presents a certificate of service to Ken Warden in recognition of your five years of service as a career firefighter, engineer for the Ellsworth Fire Department and additionally for your previous 30 years as a volunteer firefighter. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. Presented this the 11th day of January 2021. Congratulations.
And the last presentation we'd like to make is to Mike Hengy.
Do you want to stand in the middle? Is this good?
Yes.
That's perfect.
Smile.
Presented to Mike Hengy with deepest appreciation for your 40 years of dedicated service to the Ellsworth Fire Department. Volunteer firefighter from 1980 to 1986, career firefighter, firefighter, 1986 to 2006, captain, 2006 to 2007, and fire inspector from 2007 to 2020. And the work that you've done in terms of what you've done for the city, and now you go off and enjoy retirement, but certainly appreciate, it's going to be hard shoes to fill. Really want to thank you for all your service to the city. Congratulations.
Unfinished business. Item nine, council order number 122005, discussion and action on EMS services within the city of Ellsworth. This was tabled at the December 21st, 2020 council meeting.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we haven't made any progress on that front, but we do have a EMS committee meeting scheduled for the 21st. So I'm hopeful that we can bring it, perhaps bring it back to the next council meeting with some progress.
Motion to table?
Motion to table?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of the table? Unanimous. Consent agenda. All items of an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 10, council order number 012100, request of the City of Ellsworth Housing Authority for confirmation for the appointment of David Remick as a tenant representative to the Ellsworth Housing Authority Board with a term to expire of January 1st, 2026. And council order number 012101, request of the City of Ellsworth Housing Authority for confirmation of the appointment of Jerry White to the Board of the City of Ellsworth Housing Authority, term to expire January 1st, 2026.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Of a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. New business. Item 12, public hearing and action on the applications for issuance of the following business licenses. And first, check, everything's all in order. First is Jeff and Diane Kelly Locats, DBA 86 this, 125 Main Street, for renewal of a city Class C vichyler and liquor and renewal of a state restaurant Class III and IV malt and vinous liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. We'll wait a few minutes to see if... Seeing no comments, close the public hearing. Counselors?
Move approval of a request of 86 this for renewal of licenses.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. GC Pizza Hut LLC, DBA Pizza Hut, 211 High Street, for renewal of a city Class C vichyler and liquor license and renewal of a state restaurant Class IV malt liquor license. It's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move approval of Pizza Hut.
Have a motion?
Second.
And seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. ETC LLC, DBA Deons 35 Eastwood Lane, for renewal of a city Class C vichyler and liquor license and renewal of a state restaurant Class III and IV malt and vinous liquor license. The public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Close the public hearing. Counselors?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Deons.
Have a motion?
Second.
You have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And the Grand, 165 Main Street, for renewal of a city Class B license, vichyler liquor and amusement and renewal of a state other auditorium theater Class III and IV malt and vinous liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the Grand.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Before moving on, I just want to ask, if you are sending in comments that you want me to read, please note that you want me to read them. I've received some comments that don't state that, so I'm not sure if it's intended to be read tonight or not. And I don't want to read something that is not intended for the public. So please note that in, somewhere in the email, and I'd be happy to read those. So item 13, council order number 012102, request of the police chief to renew the regional communication center third shift dispatch services agreement between the Hancock County Commissioners and the City of Ellsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You all should have the agreement in your packet. You'll note that there's no change in the current rate structure for this coming year, 2021. We did see an increase back in, I think it was around July, when the RCC increased us slightly due to EMS and the requirement for them to dispatch for our fire to respond to EMS calls within the city. So based on that increase, there is no increase for this contract, which will take us through the 2021.
This agreement has still worked well.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the agreement between the City of Ellsworth, Maine and Hancock County Commissioners for the regional communication center third shift dispatching services is presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 14, council order number 012103, discussion and action from the executive session held on January 5th, 2021 per MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A. And as I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, 14, 15, and 16 will deal with the hiring of the city manager. Have received a number of comments to be read this evening. But where I would like to start is, before the council provides the update from the meeting, is to give the public the opportunity to weigh in, and I'll read those comments. But I'll open it up to anyone in the room or on Zoom that would like to make a comment. So waiting, I will bear with me as I get back to the beginning and make sure that I read every comment that has been sent. Peter, you can just nod. Do you, do you want me to read your comment versus you reading it? Okay. So again, bear with me as I open these up. Make sure the font's big enough so I can read it, all that stuff.
Bald eyes.
No, not at all. All right, so this comment is from Peter Leon from Franklin Street. Dear Counselor Hamilton, first of all, I would like to thank you for your immediate response to my email. None of the other councilors seemed to be interested or had taken the time in follow-up to our conversation. I hope the council has decided not to forego the promised hiring procedure and to stick to the hiring mandate stated in the city charter. I repeat, my biggest concern is the council's reasoning of having one man as both the city manager and chief of police. In these challenging times, Ellsworth especially needs both positions to have strong leadership. Having Chief Moser, despite his doing a very good job as chief, occupying two part-time positions lessens both of our security and the leadership of the city government. These positions, even in the best of times, have always been full-time, and I hope the council reconsideres this radical move. I would like my email read at the meeting on January 11th. As a resident, I am committed to hold the council accountable. And then this next comment comes from Robin Snyder Drummond, Park Street, to the city council. A new city manager has been appointed, and yet, there are fundamental questions that remain about this selection. These are my two main concerns. The positions of city manager specific requirements in their background. The chief of police's background does not meet these requirements. The person simply does not qualify to be a city manager. For that matter, there are many more people in the city you could consider if the requirements aren't necessary. It is wiser for the city council to pursue qualified candidates, especially knowing that a consultant has been paid to find them. Two, the position of chief of police is a full-time job. It seems unreasonable to rely on one person to commit themselves for two important full-time positions at the same time. I see no benefit for the city, especially considering the number of crises we've endured in the last year. I am a taxpaying resident. I shop at local businesses and volunteer with community groups because I care about the citizens in the city. Please read this letter at the meeting on January 11th, and please clarify your answers to these questions. The next comment comes from Betsy Artson from Ellsworth. Dear councilors, we, the citizens, have confidence in you. We voted for each of you. We want you to succeed. We want the Ellsworth government to succeed. We want to communicate more effectively with you so Ellsworth government can succeed. When the citizens point out that the councilors have made a wrong turn, we don't bring it to you as a recommendation to take under advisement. We point it out because it's a wrong turn, and it is time for a mid-course correction. The mid-course correction is to reopen the search for a city manager, advertising it more widely, and continue with the interim city manager until a successful candidate is chosen. Why do this? Because the qualifications of the candidate you are offering the job to are not a match with the qualifications stated in the job description. In no case can the city manager hold two positions because that demotes the city manager to a part-time position in a city whose population is over 8,000 and on the rise. Not a recipe for success in the short term or long term. We want the Ellsworth government to succeed. We want you to succeed. Please make a mid-course correction in the hiring of the city manager. So I am not sure if this one, this one came in earlier today. I guess I'm not positive that this person wanted it read, so let me read it out loud without giving the person's name. And if the person is listening, they can let me know, just so that we have the feedback and it's public. As a member of this city and a board member of the two local nonprofits with involvement in the betterment of the city of Ellsworth, I'm writing to express my sincere concern about the hiring of Glenn Moser as city manager on a permanent basis. I respect Chief Moser and the role he has played in leading our police department, and I believe his background, experience, and education make him well-qualified for his position as police chief. However, the position of chief city manager for a community the size of Ellsworth requires a distinct set of skills, experiences, and educational background, and Chief Moser is not sufficiently qualified to be an effective city manager and steer our city towards its best, most vibrant, and successful future. City manager is a critical position for the administration and planning of Ellsworth, and it requires, as it always has in recent past, a full-time manager. Demoting that role to a part-time position would be a step backwards in light of the growth of Ellsworth and the complex issues facing our town at this time. While I understand the job market for city managers is tight at the moment, the city council owes it to our citizens to persist and follow the search criteria as you have set them out, rather than stopping the search and settling for someone who is conveniently close at hand. Please do not vote to hire our chief of police as a city manager at tonight's meeting. This next one comes from Paul Markosian. Greetings, Chairman Hamilton and fellow city council members. I would like to add my voice to those asking that you continue the search for a new city manager rather than combine the position with an existing department head. As stated by others, I believe the two jobs are too big for one person to fill. Furthermore, for a city the size of Ellsworth, with its robust growth trends, both in population and economic activity, we need a candidate with substantial creden- and economic activity, we need a candidate with substantial credentials, both educational, experience-based, and public administration. I would appreciate if you would read this message aloud at this evening's meeting. Thank you all very much for your service to our city. The next message comes from Bronson Plattner. I am concerned that instead of reopening the search for city manager, the council seems to have decided to hire Glenn Moser without looking at or comparing him to other potential candidates. Glenn has been a good police chief and might make a good city manager, but different qualities and experience are needed for the two jobs. The council should be making the effort to find the best city manager. Even more concerning is the idea that one person should be both police chief and city manager. Both positions are and should be full-time positions with different concerns and responsibilities. If the council considers that one person can adequately do both part-time, is not only mistaken, but has wasted taxpayer money for a number of years. I hope the council will reconsider reopening this process and does not attempt to combine these positions. And this next one comes from Leslie Harlow in Beals Avenue. Dear Ellsworth City Council, as a resident of Ellsworth and business owner, I am writing to you with my urgent concerns regarding the current hiring process for the city manager position. For the past number of years, Glenn Moser has been in the position of chief of police where he has performed his job with-- Sorry. Very small font. His rapport with the community fairness and balanced approach to law enforcement is bent of utmost professionalism. His additional FBI training outside of the area during his term reflected his obvious commitment to law enforcement. All good decisions. Bottom line, Ellsworth council has made a superb decision with Glenn Moser as chief of police. He should continue in that capacity or formally apply to the city manager position if he desires. Ellsworth is a small city with the big city challenges. An ongoing year-round population increase, a summer population expansion with an additional three to four million people who drive through as visitors for five months is a heavy lift for a community with 8,000 citizens. Additionally, the city is faced with pressing tough issues which demand immediate addressing, ranging from public works to economic development to planning and overall goodwill coupled with community relations. This requires an experienced city manager to oversee it all, to make operations unsmoothly during these challenging times, a win-win for all. That the council is considering offering two municipal positions to one person who does not fill the requirements of one of them as city manager is unsettling at best. As a matter of fact, the stipulations of the current search for city manager that was created by the council clearly states that the candidate must have a minimum of five years of demonstrated municipal management experience as a manager or similar private business experience. Proven experience in areas of economic development. Individual must be a visionary, policy management that are desired. Applicants will possess a bachelor's degree in public or business administration with a master's degree preferred. It behooves the council to reopen the search for city manager. By doing so, the council should follow its own guidelines as outlined in the original online announcement on the Main Municipal Association page for the position. It will bring integrity, transparency, and professionalism back to the process. Additionally, the council might consider creating a citizen committee of volunteers to help with the process, taking some of the stress off the council. Ellsworth citizens from many facets of the population have questioned the current search and hiring process for city manager, resulting a group of citizens who call themselves citizens acting for responsible Ellsworth care have coalesced around the need for transparent city government, particularly with regards to the hiring of a new city manager. I am part of that group and plan to stay involved as issues present themselves going forward. Thank you for your time and consideration. Good evening. My name is Gordon Workman. Tonight, you're going to be voting on the issue of city manager and chief of police being held by one person. The way I see this, it is a conflict of interest. The controlling director or a city manager cannot oversee a position that one also holds and holds oneself accountable to the other. That's just common sense. The city manager should be held by a person that is well-qualified. The city already had one issue where the city put a person in that position that didn't have the qualifications. The city needs to seek a person that is qualified as city manager with experience and training as city manager. Also wouldn't have a conflict to be in charge of the city departments. I also think the city charter should be rewritten where it takes a council decision to reprimand or hold accountable department heads for any issue that arise. So far, the city has wasted money on the last two searches for the past two city managers. The last city manager search after Michelle Beal, the city had a very well-qualified person that was going to move to the Ellsworth area and have an invested interest in the city. Instead, the city hired a person that had no interest in being invested into the city or moving here. Just because one holds a position of manager for one department doesn't make him or her an expert in another. So what it's worth, those are my thoughts as a citizen of Ellsworth, but not as an expert, and you can share them tonight. Thank you, Gordon Workman. And I'll just pause for a second to see if anybody has joined on Zoom that wants to comment. This is the part where I catch my breath, so I'm hoping somebody-- So seeing none, I will move on. This next one is from Nicole Grohowski. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few thoughts this evening. In my role as the state representative serving Ellsworth, I have endeavored to be as available and transparent to citizens as possible. I find that because of the relationships I have been building in our community and my general accessibility, many come to me with their concerns about government at any level. People share their feedback when I campaign at doors, when I'm out and about, and of course by phone, email, mail, and social media. Quite often, their concerns are about city operations. While I could detail the particular challenges facing our community that indicate an experienced city manager would be an asset, I will not take the time this evening. Instead, I feel compelled to speak about the city manager hiring process as a person elected to listen and to speak for others. I feel duty-bound to do so because I know that many of the individuals do not feel they are in a position to speak up. Ellsworth residents and business owners have shared with me the following concerns about what has happened in this process over the past few months. One, a second competitive application process for the most important position in city operations was halted in favor of a promotion. Two, there is uncertainty and a lack of information about whether the council's established qualifications required for the positions are met by the council's recent choice and to what extent. Three, citizens who provided comments about what they were seeking as city manager are uncertain if the comments were received, read, and taken into account. Four, there is a significant concern that two full-time positions are proposed to be combined into one, especially the two specific positions of city manager and police chief. Five, people are afraid of approaching a city manager about police issues or other concerns if the manager has been or is the city's police chief because they are intimidated and uncomfortable in the presence of law enforcement. Whether or not you understand or agree with these sentiments, they exist in our community, and I believe they must be heard and weighed when you make the critical decision of who will be our next city manager. I encourage the council to reconsider the process it has recently taken and reopen a competitive application process to which our current interim city manager can apply and compete fairly with the new applicant pool that will develop. I am certain that there are citizens who would step up to help with the process to lighten the load of councilors. Thank you for considering returning to a more transparent and competitive process. Thank you also for your service and time you give to the community. I can certainly understand the effort that it takes. Representative Nicole Grohowski. From Martha Dickinson, Ellsworth. I've just read, I've just heard John Stein's comments regarding the city manager position. I'd like to express my full agreement with John's views that Ellsworth needs a full-time city manager. I ask you to carefully consider this issue. I'm grateful for all the hard work you and the other councils do on our behalf. And the next one, from Edward Mathias Kamen III, 41 Church Street. Chairman Hamilton, please read this aloud. I and many other concerned Ellsworth citizens respectfully request that the full-time city manager and the full-time police chief not be the same person. We also desire full transparency in the hiring process and that the appropriate process is followed. Thank you. A message from Gwen Clark. Might I suggest red, white, and blue crosswalks and combination of the two positions to save money? Great idea. Glenn Moser more than capable and qualified for the slot. That being said, Ellsworth PD needs work. And those are the comments that I've received up to this point. I'll just double-check to see if anybody on Zoom has a comment. And I would remind anybody that might be watching-- Yes, I'll get, just so I'm clear. Anybody that's watching on Facebook, we do not monitor Facebook. So if you're making comments there, please either send them, email them to me, or join the Zoom so that we can take your comments. So the Zoom is now open?
So my name is Todd Little Sebel. I live out on the Bayside Road. Hopefully, I'd be a familiar voice for the councilors. I gave input on the qualifications. You all asked for input on qualifications for city manager, and I provided extensive comments, but also joined your meeting at that time. And first off, I want to say, as some of you know, I work at the College Atlantic in Bar Harbor, and we have been engaged in search processes in the middle of the pandemic. So I understand fully how complicated it is to recruit people right now. So I understand that there are a lot of pressures on a search process that normally wouldn't exist. So I clearly, I understand that probably many dimensions of this search are outside sort of the normal procedures that one would use. But I would say that, like many of the other comments, I was just, I was surprised by both the lack of input that you all had-- Sure, I would say I felt like you all had made a kind of commitment and promise to the citizens to have a transparent and inclusive process where citizens could follow that process and provide input or feedback to the council. And I just, I imagine that you all took the direction you took for some very good reasons, but I have to say, as a citizen, I was dismayed by that choice. Mostly because I think, and I speak personally in this regard, I believe that many citizens feel as if it's very important, sort of an important turning point for Ellsworth each time we have a new city manager. And to have someone who is really responsive and connected to citizens, I think my comments at the very beginning of this process, I said that I felt as if citizens' input was not taken seriously, and that I was really looking forward to a new city manager. As you'll remember, I'm sure many people said this, who listen to different voices and really look forward to the future of Ellsworth, but bringing all voices together. And I hoped to have some insight or feedback about the candidate so that we could help the council think through who best could lead Ellsworth forward in an inclusive way. Because I think many people have been frustrated by the kind of deflection and ignoring citizen input that we've experienced for the last several years. And again, I mean, I know some of this is, if I need to communicate with you all in the council, I need to do that, and I probably should have expressed my frustrations before. But I think this is a really important turning point. And I think it's an important turning point for the council, too, to sort of signal that they're really listening to citizens in this particular case. So it feels really like an important moment to take a pause and really think, okay, so we said we would do this. We know we have these kinds of issues. What are we going to do to move forward to reassure the citizens of Ellsworth that we're actually listening? And on a completely separate issue, I mean, obviously, a number of people have raised this. We don't need a half-time city manager. We don't need a half-time police chief. Our town is in a real-- is in need of real leadership to address some pretty fundamental challenges of growth and other sorts of things, some major projects, like trying to turn the city back towards the river. And I cannot imagine, I could totally imagine that the council saying, well, this is a temporary solution that we found just because of the, you know, we can't find a good permanent solution. But I cannot see this as a good permanent solution. And to me, the curious thing is if the council thought we needed two full-time people to do these jobs, I mean, maybe I should have been paying closer attention, but how that work will be accomplished and how, particularly with the challenges of COVID and not going away anytime soon, it does not seem like a simple task to try to do those two things together. So my, obviously, I would urge the council to pause, to consider how it moves forward, both in terms of the legitimacy of this decision before citizens, who you promised an inclusive process, in terms of a city manager who could actually really bring Ellsworth together and point us in the right direction. And also then, I just feel, I'm sure, in negotiations with Chief Moser, a lot of people have a great deal of admiration, can-do attitude, yep, let's get it done, but it just seems like an irrational solution in a very, very complicated time. And it's a community that is powerfully divided right now in a lot of different ways. And so I think I'm not sure how you selected and looked at candidates and that sort of stuff, but if you didn't get the candidate pool that you wanted, I don't think the solution is to cobble two half-time positions together. And as I say, I can only imagine, I'm sure this was not your first choice, and I'm sure, you know, I hate to sort of second-guess this, but I wanted to express very clearly the frustration with process in particular. And I'm sure you know this. I mean, you all are in a terrible position often because we pay attention only when we pay attention. But you have an opportunity to communicate clearly to the community that you've heard them and that the sort of energetic and engaged response from community members, you know, will give you pause, and you'll hit the pause button and rethink it. So, and as always, thank you for your service, and I look forward to hearing what you all decide.
Is there anyone else on Zoom that's wanted to comment? All right. So one of the things that, both tonight and in between meetings, and specifically from CARE, the council as a council, not individual members, were asked to respond as a whole. So I'm going to turn this over to Counsel Blanchett to present a statement.
On behalf of the Ellsworth City Council, I am responding to statements and questions that we have received regarding the city manager hiring process. Upon completion of a targeted bidding process, the council selected Eaton Peabody to provide oversight and facilitation of the recruitment process. We established a process that included community participation. Although we did not incorporate every suggestion regarding how the community could participate, we did endorse and recognize the need to gather community feedback. This took place on October 21, 2020, and informally throughout the process. The competitive hiring process was moved through the stated process until we selected one finalist. When that finalist removed himself from consideration, we were prepared to seek additional applicants. Prior to starting a new process, we identified the opportunity to promote from within, and we made an announcement to the community that we were beginning negotiations with Glenn Moser. We understand that some members of the community-- We understand that some members of the community feel that this is a diversion from the process, but we do not share that same opinion. We were only weeks removed from the receipt of applications, and we believe that it was entirely appropriate to review Mr. Moser's credentials before starting a new process. Mr. Moser meets the qualifications for the position and has a long history to evaluate his candidacy against the other applicants. We immediately announced the decision to begin negotiations with Mr. Moser to the public, consistent with the stated plan to provide the public with an opportunity to provide feedback on this candidate. The demonstrated skill set and qualities of Glenn Moser are consistent with the position requirements, and his qualities are consistent with the recommendations generated by the community. Glenn brings practical skills that include holding a bachelor's degree in government, experience in budgeting, union negotiation, leadership, high-level management, and finance. Mr. Moser has a demonstrated history of strong community engagement. We believe that his background prepares him to be an outstanding city manager. One of the frequent criticisms of city government is that it is not innovative, creative, and efficient. We believe that the situation presents a unique opportunity to address these criticisms. We thought it was productive to entertain a discussion of how Mr. Moser might be able to maintain responsibility for functions that have historically been associated with a titled position. The city manager, by charter, has direct oversight and control of all departments. We appreciate the feedback and concern from the community regarding the need to maintain clear lines of division between the city manager and police department as it relates to certain functions. At the same time, we believe some of these functions can be assumed by Mr. Moser in the transfer. These functions relate to high-level, to high-level items such as policy, procedures, and planning. Day-to-day oversight will be the responsibility of the deputy chief, who will manage such things as schedules, supervision, and community policing. We believe this alignment of function provides the city with an opportunity to be more efficient and cost-effective while maintaining a balance of workload that utilizes existing expertise without compromising the responsibilities of the city manager role.
Any other councillors want to make a comment? All right. We'll move to item 15. Executive session to discuss personnel matters in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A. Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? We'll move into executive session. And we will be reporting out. All right. So we are coming back out of executive session. I will, if you're watching on Facebook and wanting to Zoom back in, I will give just a minute for that to happen. I know there's a bit of a delay on Facebook, so I'll just wait a minute. All right. Item, item 16, council order number 012104. Discussion in action from the above executive session per MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A. And Jason, can you mute? Okay, I'm going to read that again because I think I was on mute. So item 16, council order number 012104. Discussion in action from the above executive session per MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A.
Mr. Chairman, very pleased to make a motion to accept the contract to hire Glenn Moser as city manager with an effective date of January 17th, as presented and amended.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? So congratulations, Mr. Moser, and I'd like to turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board, for the support that you've displayed in me tonight. I do want to say, you know, I wanted to have an opportunity to just comment on a few of the things that were said tonight, and, you know, and I certainly sympathize with the folks who brought questions about my, you know, my capabilities and my, you know, my experience to lead the city going forward. And much like them, when we began this process of searching for a city manager, I had high hopes and high expectations of what the next city manager might bring to the community. I do not live in Ellsworth, has been, you know, that certainly has been pointed out many times throughout this process, but the fact that I've dedicated the last 17 years of my life to serving the people of Ellsworth in my role as a police officer, all the way up to police chief. I grew up in this community, and I've been coming here since I was a kid. I shopped in the stores in this town, I eat in the restaurants on a regular basis. There's very little about Ellsworth that I don't know, that I'm not familiar with. I played high school basketball here in Ellsworth. I used to go to the courts all the time as a teenager and spend a lot of nights hanging out in the mall parking lot. Now, none of this makes me qualified as a city manager, I understand that, but what it does do is it makes me highly qualified to understand the people of Ellsworth and understand the needs of the community going forward, much more so than somebody who maybe comes from another community, perhaps they were a city manager, but they don't understand Ellsworth, they don't understand the people of down East Maine, a community that I've grown up in my entire life. And I certainly have a lot of friends and family in the Ellsworth community and outside of it. As far as my educational background, I do hold a bachelor's degree in government, and after college, I lived away for many years outside of Maine. I lived in Washington DC, I lived in Honolulu, Hawaii, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and also Boston, Massachusetts, before eventually moving home to run a business with my wife and raise our family. Since then, I've devoted my life to law enforcement, and I've had an outstanding career here with the city of Ellsworth, one that I'm very proud of, and I'm very proud of the gains that we've made with the Ellsworth Police Department and the relationship we have with our community. In this role as city manager, I look forward to bringing the community together, continuing to work with civic organizations and nonprofits throughout the community, as I have done in the past, opening lines of communication and working with groups to address the needs of the city. I've gotten a really good glimpse over the last several weeks of doing the interim of some of the, some of the needs of the city. You know, I understand the infrastructure needs better than most. I drive the roads as a police officer for many, many years, and I certainly know where the potholes are and where the other needs are throughout the city. I understand and have spent a lot of time working with our sewer and wastewater and water folks to understand the needs that they have in their individual departments. Also have spent a lot of time over the last several months dealing with personnel matters within the city. Unlike anyone else who comes from the outside, I have a very good working relationship with all of the department heads, and I understand the needs of many of their departments and certainly recognize the loss of great citizens and great employees like Mike Hangey and Chief Richard Tupper, and the need to fill those positions with qualified people who are going to hold the high-level, high-standard professionalism and dedication to the city that those two men have displayed over the recent, over the many years that they served. So I certainly take on that responsibility with a tremendous amount of pride and excitement at the opportunity, because with change and with the hiring of new folks, hopefully young folks, brings a lot of excitement and brings a lot of opportunity to see things in a different light. And I certainly hope that we could recruit and hire and train folks to be as professional as those gentlemen, but also look forward to meeting those individuals and bringing them onboard to join the team. As far as financial, other financial uncertainties in the city, certainly with COVID, we've all experienced our own individual hardships with that, whether it be family sickness or loved one's sickness, or just loss of employment, all of the, all of the things that have surrounded all of the problems with COVID that our, that our communities face. But as a bigger picture, we certainly understand, and I certainly understand, that financially the city is going to be facing some burdens that in the past we certainly haven't as a result of COVID and shortfalls in federal and state funding towards our communities and municipalities. So we're going to have to create, come up with creative ways to address those issues. And I certainly don't have the answers, but I aim to work hard, to tap to people who can help, who may have the answers, and work together to figure, to figure those out. And then, you know, there was a lot of talk about growth in our community, and I've experienced that growth firsthand. And, you know, the one thing I know about growth, and the one thing I know about the city of Ellsworth is we have to have a plan, and it has to be, we have to calculate it, we have to make the decision as to how that growth occurs, and we can't just stand back and let things happen around us and stick our head in the sand and hope that things are going to work out for the best. We have to, we have to take the bull by the horns, and we have to be the ones who dictate and, and make sure that that growth is planned and calculated in a way that's going to be productive and it's going to be sustainable for the city of Ellsworth and all of its citizens. So in conclusion, I look forward to working hard and working with all the civic organizations, nonprofits, and city staff to move the city forward in a positive and exciting future. And to that, I would just say that, you know, I dedicate to give everything I've got to this position, as well as continuing to maintain a high-level supervisory position over the police department. And I think that after some, a due time, and if folks just are open-minded and give me the opportunity to show that I do have what it takes to be a successful city manager, and will be able to manage to keep the police department moving in a positive direction as we have over the last three years under my leadership, I think that they'll be pleasantly surprised. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And so I just want to make a brief comment just in terms of all the process pieces, and I really want to stress the fact that I think in some of the comments that we've received, there's some equating of valuing opinion as being synonymous with agreeing with opinions. And I just want to stress that we certainly took to heart the feedback that we received, and ultimately, we made decisions that some people agree with and some people do not. That doesn't mean that we don't value input or we don't value the conversations. In fact, the opposite is true. And for all of us, the message that we heard tonight from the community, the message that I think everybody on this council stands for and what Mr. Moser just stressed, is that if we're going to make Ellsworth the kind of community that we all want, we all need to be involved and invested, we all need to be engaged. It's not up to one individual to drive that change. That happens from the community. And what we can't do is just remain divided because decisions don't go one way or the other. We're constantly in positions where, with 8,000 people, we're never going to make decisions that everybody agrees to, but what we can agree to is to constantly work to make Ellsworth a better community. I think there's a great opportunity for us to continue that. I would encourage us to take this situation, build on it, and work together. Let's get past COVID. We're on the trajectory for things to improve, but there still is a lot of hardship. Let's work as a community to make this community better. Let's all be engaged, and I think Mr. Moser will help to lead that effort as well.
And I would just like to add, perhaps you can explain that this is not a 50-50 role, half-police chief, half-city manager, so perhaps you could explain the functions that would allow you to do this, so that the public understands.
Yeah, so, you know, I think prior to, if you would ask me that same question three months ago, I think I would have the same reservation that many community members have brought forward, but the reality is, is that's exactly what I've been doing for the last three months. And what I've seen is that I have a very competent command staff in my police department who have the ability to manage the day-to-day operations of the police department with little to no involvement from me. And, and so, over the last several months, I've spent my time, you know, throughout the course of the day, I spend time in this department, I spend time in finance, I spend time in code, I spend time in, in human resources, a lot of time in human resources, as of late it seems, but, and then I spend time in the police department. So the role as city manager, you know, as a city manager, I have a high functioning control over all of the departments, that I manage the department heads, I work with the department heads because they're the experts in those departments, I'm not. Where it will vary is in the police department, I will be the expert. I will lean on the command staff to handle the day-to-day operations and to turn to me for the high-level execution of policies and procedures and maintaining a certain level of expectation that I have for the police department, for their professionalism and the way that they behave. And so that high-level responsibility will still continue to be part of my day-to-day functioning in the city, just as I would be dealing with issues perhaps in the fire department or issues in, in human resources with new hires and so forth. So that's how I envision the role. We will be doing some restructuring in the police department to make that, to make that happen, but certainly, these conversations I've had with members of the department, so they're aware of, you know, of what the future is likely to look like for them. And so I have complete confidence in them, and I have complete confidence in myself to be able to maintain those, those high-level requirements for the, for the police department while seeing to the other business of the city.
Thank you.
Then item 17 adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.